I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen in Millville, Massachusetts to order at 7:01 PM on Monday, January 8th, 2024. Please stand for federal allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Just quick introductions. Richard, we'll start with you.
Richard Remus.
Andrew Allward.
Jennifer Gill.
Peter Caruso Town Administrator.
Matthew Maile.
Okay. We have one member of the Board of Selectmen who is unable to be here tonight, but we do still have a quorum, so we will still have a meeting. Okay. So, new business. So, 46 Hope Street matters for consideration. So, there's emails on this in the packet. I can explain it, but Peter could probably do it better, so I will hand it over to Peter.
Sure. So, you recall this was brought forth to the Board some time ago. It's an affordable housing, six-unit facility that the property owner is in a corporation, LLC, looking to sell the back some time ago, was looking to sell. And under the various agreements, they're subject to three agreements, basically, an affordable housing restriction. I'd have to go get the agreements, tell you what specifics are. But anyway, there's three agreements. One is a mortgage with the town. The town provided 450 grand mortgage to them, which came to the town by way of a grant many years ago, back when this was first set up. And the money, under the arrangement with the property owner, if they sell the property and they sell it in excess of a certain amount owed, the excess would come back to the town repayment of this mortgage in the mortgage amount of 450. And what they were talking about as an amount was somewhere in the order of 900 grand sale amount. Okay? And it required that the Board of Selectmen and DCHD, which is, you know, now has a different name, but it's a state entity that controls affordable housing types of arrangements like this. It required both entities' approval. You folks approved it back some time ago, in the springtime, I think it was. And the state also provided the approval. Nothing happened for a while. It resurfaced again where the property owner or the attorney for the property owner came forth to the town, wanted to change the nature of what had been approved to sell the stock or the ownership of the entity to a separate, you know, party. And so, we went back and said, well, we would want to know information about the party to satisfy ourselves that they could carry on in this affordable housing as the landlord. Two, that the existing party has complied with the, there are various terms of agreements that they're subject to, that they've complied with those. And that would be through some form of an internal audit, as I described it. The attorney came back subsequently and said, okay, we've changed our mind. And a lot of that's in this email stream here. We've changed our mind and we'd like to, we're going to go back to selling it, but we're asking for a waiver from the town of reimbursing you the 450 grand. So, what I'm looking for tonight is your consensus or approval or vote, I would argue, that you, my recommendation to you is that we continue to follow the agreements, which means you would not provide that waiver, that the money would come back to the town. And that money would be, come back to the town and go into town's free cash. It's, there's no additional continuing obligation on behalf of the town to reuse that money for affordable housing. Okay? So, there's that. The second piece of it is, depending on what you decide in that regard, and you'll see there's correspondence with council who agrees. If, if they wind up paying us the 450, then doing the internal audit of compliance is not necessary, is not worth doing. Should, but I would look for you to give, provide me the judgment, you know, rely on my judgment to initiate an internal audit. I expect that we'll find lack of compliance on a number of terms. If we do, then there's a seven-day period in which we have to notify them that they're out of compliance. And that starts kind of a chain of events, legal and otherwise, that ultimately gets to immediate repay of the repayment of the 450. So, I prefer to not go down that road because we've only done preliminary internal audit work. We're not obligated to notify them of any non-compliance at this stage. Okay? You follow me? It's a complicated thing.
So, question, they're not willing to repay the town the 450 for the initial loan?
They're asking to, for your approval, Boris Luckman's approval, to waive compliance with the terms of the agreements they're subject to, which includes repayment of the 450.
Town's a lien holder, we've got a mortgage on it.
That's right. Yep.
And you were more intimate with the contract. Maybe you don't want to answer this, but does the town have a right to buy the remaining portion of the property, the building?
I don't know that. And I don't know whether you would want to do that, I think.
I don't know either, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah. I don't know that. The town could do whatever. Yeah. My answer, quick answer is, why would it be restricted from doing that? I don't know that there are any such restrictions.
I was wondering if we have first right refusal on it, provided the initial.
I don't recall seeing that in the agreements when I looked at them. Yep.
Is it under agreement now with somebody? Do you know?
I don't know that.
Okay.
The agreements I'm talking about are the, the housing restriction agreement, mortgage. And then there's another, it was the initial development of the property agreement.
So, how did they get the 850 figure?
The, we were previously told approximate amount of what the, they were originally selling it for back in the spring.
Okay. I just didn't know if comparative analysis was done, there was appraisal, is there an offer on the table? Is it under an agreement?
I think there was, and that's why they were initially looking for it. So, we haven't delved into the specifics of who they're selling to or any of that.
Okay. That's fair enough.
Do you, do you, do you want Peter to look into that further or?
I did ask about the purchaser of the entity that owns the property. I've gotten no information. I think they, I'm interpreting that they balked at doing that information.
So, so given the current state of events in the country economically, and I know that housing is like drying up, and I don't know exactly what they can do with this. If they do sell it, does the next owner have to adhere to 40B regulations?
There's a deed restriction on it for affordable housing.
Yeah. So, if they're going to rent out, this is a multi-apartment building, right?
Yeah.
They're going to rent them out, is there a cap on the rent in the building?
Currently, there are under the agreements.
Under the current agreement.
Yeah. So, for the, you know, there are two parcels that fall under a particular income restriction and the four that fall under a different income restriction.
Which could dissolve if it changes hands?
No, the deed restriction remains, as I understand it.
Okay.
Okay. So, that, so I think one fair question is whether the needs of folks for affordable housing get impaired if the property changes hands.
It's kind of where I'm going.
There's a deed restriction.
Yeah.
That prevents that. So.
Because I'm just wondering, who would set the pricing on the next apartments that are in there? You know, would the current occupants have to vacate the properties if they can't afford it? Is there a price hike? You know, I'm kind of curious. Yeah, so yes, Jen, I want to empower him to look into the contract.
Okay.
Because I think it'd be in the best interest of the occupants of the building.
Mm-hmm.
Right. So, so, but the initial thing is a query from the lawyer for the party that owns it.
Right.
Whether the Board of Selectmen would waive the 450 repayment under the current agreements. Right? Which.
So, that's the first thing we need to settle.
So, are you, are you saying that you would not be prepared to make that, if it, if it, make that decision if it impairs the ability to continue on as affordable housing space?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So, you can't answer that question. So, you maybe don't want to take that vote tonight.
Yeah. I, yeah, I mean, I just want to make sure that the residents have a fair opportunity to acquire affordable housing, and I just don't want to lose that, that property or have a chance. And I don't know the legality of it or the contracts. I've spent no time researching it. That's why I'm asking those questions. But, you know, just kind of shooting from the hip, those would be my concerns.
Yeah, because I think, I asked Peter if this, any of this would, of how it would affect the tenants.
Right.
So, if we were to say we want to enforce the agreement as written, how would that affect the tenants? Would it affect them, yes or no? So, I would prefer that we vote to.
Assuming it has no impact on.
Yes.
Subject to type thing.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
That would make sense.
Okay.
Then I can respond to the, I'll double-check with our council and the agreements before responding, but I'll have your position known.
And I can tell Andrew wants to say something.
Yes. A quick question. So, would they be able to sell without having, if we didn't give them the waiver, they would have to pay that back before they could sell? Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So, you've already given them the approval to sell under the agreements?
Yes.
Okay. As, as the state.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't waive that money.
Yeah. And especially with real estate right now.
Right. They're doubling the.
I feel like they're being a little greedy.
Being very greedy.
To be perfectly honest. Real estate right now is not doing badly.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't feel comfortable waiving it, especially if we don't know who the buyer is at this point. Because I feel like if they're not good faith purchaser, then when we waive it, then it just seems like, it just looks bad for us, obviously.
Yep. So, then would it make sense to make a motion to enforce the agreement as written, provided what? I feel like I just had it and I lost it.
I guess the way I would say that is you've already approved it as is, right?
Yeah.
Without those ramifications, as a concern. You might want to revisit that approval if there is impact to the residents. I don't believe there is because of the continuing deed restriction, which requires affordable housing, as I understand it. But I'm not, I'm 90-something percent certain, but not 100%.
I'd like to know if there was a P and S signed. I don't know if we have any way of finding that out. I'm.
We're going to ask. I don't know that would change the response, other than, you know, with. But if you wanted to withdraw your prior approval of permission on the sale, I don't know if that would be wise, because we're, here's the other way to look at it. And I think I used the expression, the needs of the many, you know. 450 in free cash for the town of Millville benefits the whole population in versus the, what they're looking to do where the 450 doesn't come back and still has the same ramifications of the tenants.
Well, you got at least three families in that building, right?
Six.
Six families.
Well, I don't know if they're families, but six tenants.
Six, six tenants. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, 450 would, you know, help the town, but it's a minimal effect compared to a great effect of affecting six individuals, so. I don't know. Just want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the folks that are in the building too.
Yeah, I agree.
So, you wouldn't withdraw, you wouldn't change your prior approval. And so, really, all I'm doing is responding that we want to stick to the agreements. At the same time, before I do that, I'll just double-check and I'll let you know if there are any issues prior to sending something, so I might want to table action until your next meeting. If, if, when I become 100% certain and that outcome is not favorable from what I'm hearing from.
Sure.
How's that?
Okay. That sounds good. So, then we don't need to vote on anything this evening?
Well, you don't need to, but you could, still subject to, right? However you want to do it.
You want a consensus, that's really what you wanted.
Yeah, and I think I have it, so I can, you know, I guess the way I would look at it is if there are no, you know, there are no disadvantages for the tenants under this approach. I could let the lawyer know for the sellers that you want, the town wants to continue to stick to the existing agreements and the prior approval.
But we want to, you want us to take a vote on it though, right, Peter? Subject to what though? Ensuring the.
Subject to ensuring that the, that there are no negative effects on the tenants continuing affordable housing rights of some such thing.
So, would we be amending our initial approval in that case?
Maybe.
I don't know, because the deed though, like, is.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If the deed's already there, then this is, and we gave our approval.
We don't have enough detail on the deeds.
I don't have that.
We don't have the detail on the deeds, that's why.
Well, I'm just trying to, wondering what we're, what this is going to basically do.
I guess, you know, I could just sort of give a sense of where the board is to this person.
Because if we're amending our approval to be conditional on this, then that makes sense. But otherwise, I'm not sure what we're.
Voting.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Peter, weren't you just scaling more information and we're not inclined to?
Okay.
Is that, okay, we don't need to vote on it yet. Okay.
Good.
Okay. 21 Bow Street.
Yeah, just, this is more, you know, another email stream of stuff going on with a particular property. But the gist of it is, we have a property that is, you know, I guess there's a, you know, executor of the, of the estate that owns the property. And they want to put it up for sale, and there's some questions about the fact that the septic system or the leaching field is across the street under, and the pipe goes underneath Bow Street. And they were looking for an easement. An easement typically requires a town meeting vote. And so, there were some questions back and forth about if they, you know, do they do the drawings? Do they type up the specifics of a particular easement and so forth? But where we're at right now, Millville typically, when it opens a road to get access to something like this, it really is a request of the Highway Surveyor. There's no permits. He just allows for, and recent example would be, the road was opened up on Providence Street to extend the line from North Smithfield to the handful of homes down there. Okay? And that was just, you know, the, the engineers on that project from North Smithfield requested what they needed to do to get the road opened up. And it was just in fact, connect with the Highway Surveyor, Brian Malali, get his approval and the timing and all that. That's really all, all the approaches of the town. So, unlikely to necessarily need an easement. It's more likely that all would be required for any lender to a purchaser on the property to ask for a letter from the town that says, you don't need an easement, you just need to request to open up the, you know, the roadway to get access, which will not be unreasonably withheld, something to that effect. So, that's where we're at. So, that's more informational than otherwise.
Okay.
Okay.
Budget guidance?
Budget guidance.
Before I move on, anything on that? Does anyone have any questions? Sorry, I went too quick. Budget guidance, Peter, sorry.
So, budget guidance is just a different sort of what you've seen before with a couple of slight edits. You know, I, I have the caveat of, on the top of the second page in parentheses, "Subject to exceptions and challenges noted below." So, the guidance is provided, "Subject to the challenges and exceptions noted below." And in the exceptions, I list out things that where, if they need to have exceptions to the guidance of above, you know, level fund of operating expenses is an example. They need to provide, you know, good reasons for it and where the funding might come from. The real budget challenges are on the third page. Okay? Known budgeting challenges. And we've talked about these, right? Meta Comet. We're going to have to, you know, pay Meta Comet 60, it's looking like 62,000 in the current budget draft I've seen at Meta Comet. We'll be going over that next week at Meta Comet in the board meeting. But, so there, there's, there's room in the existing communications budget. I've said a big slug of that. That's part of the budget gyrations that, you know, yours truly will be going through. So, the real hit isn't going to be 60, but it still might be 20 grand or so out of the 150 we have available typically under proposition two and a half. Okay? Separately, MES, the cost of that is likely to be, you know, budgeted for 100,000 versus 48 that we had budgeted this past year before we added the supplemental amounts at Fall Town Meeting, right? But I, a key thing there is the phrase of that is approximately 60,000, you know, increase if the town continues not to adhere to the terms of the regional agreement. Okay? Because my, you know, what happens in the budgeting, I present to you a recommended budget. I could justify in my mind putting something much lower than 100 grand.
Yeah.
You know, 28% of that basically, because of the definition of operating costs and all that stuff. And I think we might get into that a little bit later.
We'll talk about that in the agreement.
The last, and then we, you know, we've talked about, we don't know what happens with BVT. We know that's the same number of students. You know, whether they're going to fit within the 3% increase on the cost per student rate. That's what I would look for, but I doubt we'll see that. And then there's Norfolk Aggie and Tri Valley where they're going to wind up. Tri Valley, we budgeted for that this year. I forget what the amount is, I can tell you if I looked at it. But somewhere there are 60 grand we budgeted for that, and we need none of it for this year. So, that's an opportunity of, if we need none next year, because they're not going to have any students, there's money to free up in this year's budget to offset some of these types of challenges. You follow me? In the budget gyrations. The last thing is the Cannabis Control Commission is evolving and changing its regulations. And I included in there a bulletin that came out last week from DLS that talks about that a bit. And basically, what, what it means is, we're coming to the end of a five-year agreement with Garden Wonders. And then, when we renew an agreement or renegotiate an agreement, we're really going to be limited to what we can do on impact fees. And in this fiscal year's budget, we projected 100 grand in impact fees and 100 grand of additional sales tax on the sales. We will continue to get the additional 3% sales tax. It's the local option sales tax that we get. So, we'll continue to get that, and it's at a higher rate than 100 grand. So, I probably got 20 to 40 grand to increase that piece by. The 100 grand that I put in last year in revenue projection for the impact fees will be something less. It will be something, because we do get to charge for what we designate as directly and indirectly attributable to costs of the, you know, the town incurs on behalf of that operation. So, but it's, it's, it's part of the challenge of the budgeting process ahead of us. Okay? So, those things come into play in terms of the guidance, again, subject to all those things. But the guidance, and there aren't too many variables. We have, you know, we have contracts with police department that we recently did. We got contracts with fire department in terms of increases. The non-union departments, I put in the 3% salary and wage increase. The actual magnitude of that is about 14 grand, and it impacts over 20 people. So, I strongly encourage that we continue to do that, because nobody's caught up with inflation yet. And our folks do a lot for a little. You can pick the department and I can tell you how little it really is. So, those are, that's why I say, I think this is a good guidance letter.
Okay.
And I'd look for your approval of handing that out. I know we have the chair of the Finance Committee. You know, I'd be curious to know if she has any concerns.
Come up, Claudia, any questions or anything?
I don't mean to put her on the spot.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
So, I'm just going to cut to the chase. Andrew, do you have any questions or any updates you want to see?
Nope. I'm good.
Did you get cold for Christmas?
Yep. It's keeping me warm, so.
And you get a full year to do bad things.
Exactly.
It's cool.
Yeah.
You know, I put caveats in there, enough to cover should we have to, you know.
Yeah.
Address things differently.
So, looking for a motion to approve in.
I'll make a motion to approve the FY '25 operating budget guidance as presented.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Richard. Any further discussion? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye. Matthew?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, for all your hard work on that. I know it's, a lot of magic has worked with the Millville budget, let me tell you.
On the department heads, I think every, all employees are pretty mindful of Millville's budget challenges and tries to.
And actually, should we talk about the email from the library? Have we got?
Sure.
Yeah, so, someone who works with the library, she reached out to me and asked, you know, you talked about the survey, can I see a copy of it? And so, I sent it to her, and so, she sent it to me literally like 15 minutes before I got here and just said, you know, you talked about maybe an extra $10,000 to the library. Like, we're not asking for that, and I don't want to start any kind of controversy, because like, we're able to operate within our budget. We make the most of all the dollars that you give us. So, all I said was, you know, if we are to move forward with any kind of override discussion or survey, like, we won't include the library, because they're like, we're good with our budget, which was an amazing thing to hear. Because I've, I'm always worried that people just aren't speaking up, because you, you know. You see, I see things on social media, people complain about the budget. So, I'm like, do people really not have enough money? Or do they have enough money? But here's the library coming forward and saying like, we're pretty, we can manage with what we have. Thank you. I thought that was very decent.
Yep.
She referenced meeting with Andrew.
Andrew, I know.
Yep. I'll be getting to that.
Okay. Oh, you know what I'm talking about here?
Was it on the?
Well, because, well, it's under the budget guidance, or is it something separate?
Oh, no, the thing, the meeting was not really about, like, it was kind of about budget, but it.
Okay. So, you're in your selection reports?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
I figured that would work better.
Okay. So, zoning map discussion, so Peter gave me a color one, and I'm happy to share it. So, the only thing, and Andrew, you might remember this better than me, because it says, "Current as of November 2016." Wasn't there updates at a meeting afterwards? Because I remember the building inspector standing up and making amendments to bylaws, and I can't remember, it was 17 or 18, because I was at this town meeting. I can tell you, I was not at a town meeting in 2016.
So, I have just, in the zoning bylaws, in May of 2019, the list of the types of things that would fall under the various designations of, you know, of zoning were updated in that. But I, I'm not aware of an additional, a new map. This is the map that's on the wall in the planning department, which is a desk.
Yeah. So, if this is my, I mean, this.
As far as I'm aware, it's current, the last time, I think there were any changes.
Double, double check, but.
Yeah.
It was many years ago, and I could be not remembering things correctly. That absolutely happens several times a day.
Yeah. Because the only other changes, I think, that were proposed were mostly shot down. They were not about like the commercial district, but they were about like signs and like hedges and stuff like that, and fences, which were shot down.
Okay.
So. I don't have a color map, so I'm just spying.
Here, you want to hear us?
No, 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 it's coded. It's coded.
Yeah.
It's hard to see the streets.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm looking at.
In the commercial district, it's hard to see where the roadway goes.
I was just studying in your codes, your legend here.
So, CB is Commercial Business District. OR, Outline Residential District. Village Center is VC, and Village Residential District VR. So, the black is the commercial, the gray is the VR, the Village Residential.
So, only in this center, this black strip can business operate?
All the red.
Yes.
So, with that Central Street in, 122, basically?
Yes.
More or less, yeah.
Yeah.
And a little bit up.
A little bit up Lincoln Street, and like, it looks like maybe a little bit down Providence Street, like the corner of Providence right there. And then the corner of Quaker, the corner of Chesley, the corner of Basely, Bow Street. So, Ironstone, the street, so. A little bit on each side.
Yeah.
Each one or two houses in, it looks like. So, it's one, two houses, basically, these little.
Yeah. Probably like an acre, a couple acres in, off the street.
I'm not good with estimating that. I'll say one or two houses in, because it has two little squares.
So, I mean, the availability of this land isn't exactly, there's not, most of it's already settled or by something or someone.
Do we have any parcels open?
So we have parcels, right? So we own a fair amount in that, you know.
Okay.
Which include, yeah, along the river, this side of the river. We, we have most of it, the town has most of it, from Uxbridge to Blackstone, other than a couple of big chunks on the Blackstone side.
The problem with most of those, especially on the side towards Blackstone, is that we don't really have any access to get to that.
Correct.
Which makes it basically.
That's right, and it's a flood district, but that's something you can work around. And, and across the street, again, it's access, the access would be through the Old Town Hall Police Department. But it's, it's really limited in geography, what you can do.
Not very flat.
I was more looking for the trail, so that's not likely to be commercialized. So. You don't have a lot to work with.
So do we have any other questions or things you wanna ask, maybe for the zoning board or?
What question? So like, in these two regions here, I'm thinking about the town, some lands there, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
Are those all protected? Cause I know there's a decent amount of protected land.
Wetlands, yeah, like over here.
So one of the big slugs is up Thayer Street, right? Where there was the development that was going in, it's now since been purchased. And so they were in, the acquiring party of the Kukoli. Remember, we had issues with Kukoli some time ago, if you will? Who was trying to stop things and whatever. So that parcel has been purchased, and it was a seventeen-unit development that we, back with Kukoli and his compadres, right? And it, we, one of the deal breakers for them are things which slowed them, may, they argued slowed them down from development was the need for fire suppression capability into that development. And I have a pretty map, I can show you of it, if you wanna see it.
So this was the old development, this block right here?
Yeah.
Cause I think they came down more, cause I remember seeing tractors or something back here.
Representative of the buyer was in front of the planning board today. This is the seventeen-unit you know, parcel. And they're talking about what, I mean, they're just preliminary, they haven't put any plans forward. But it was Jack, our planner, you remember Jack, who served as our planner? He represents the now owner. And they, all he showed me just in one minute today was they're talking about having the seventeen units down here and giving some of the property back to the town. Cause they can't do anything on it, cause it's a blasting of ledge that would be required, so it's of no value to them, I guess. So anyway, so it'd be more like condos is what he was talking about. Again, this is all preliminary, and, but it was at a meeting tonight, so.
What about behind Megan's Way?
So I don't know what, what else we got going here, I, I don't. That never went anywhere, and I don't even know who owns that.
Okay.
But, I mean, Millville has a lot of land. Has a lot of nice land, or land that you can't do much with. But still, you got ni- nice nature here. You know, I lived in Sherburne for many years, and I call Millville the, not the poor man Sherburne, but it's a, it's, it's Sherburne yet to be realized. Because Sherburne's similar size, small population, you know, no industry. A lot of nice land, and only there, everybody's on well water and septic like here. Only there, the taxes are three-plus times what's here, and it's a regional school system. So Millville, I think, has a lot to realize yet.
The major concern that I would have for this is the fact that I'd want the town to have as little land as possible. Because obviously, it doesn't really, we can't really do much with it at this point. We can build some parks, but how many parks do we really need? Kind of goes down to the thing, plus this area's been getting developed, and the local area's been getting developed with lots of parks recently as well. So I wouldn't want to see us get more land at all costs. And I'd like to see us try to sell as much of it as we could possibly, just to get it back on the tax rolls. And also have it developed to something productive for the town. Obviously, we have these kind of areas over here, which aren't really, or even kind of this area.
We, and we have land behind the church.
Yeah.
That goes up to the school, and there's a lot, so that, that's a big slug of land going up there. So would you, like, we have a list, the assessors have a list of the land that the town owns. And so, next meeting, maybe I'll have that list for you.
Yeah, that would be great.
Further your thoughts on that, maybe? Cause it is, it, you do, we do have a lot of land, we're not doing anything with it.
Okay.
And you might wanna create a land utilization committee or something, cause I.
I'm not saying anything, I'm not joining it. I don't hear anything.
But that, but, I, I mean, because, so that we have, we make best use of what we have in some manner. And we identify those parcels that might present problems like the Prater Street did, having sold it and bought it back twice.
Yes.
We don't wanna do it a third time.
No.
But there's five acres of land.
Why we make it into a dog park?
Cut some trees down?
Yep.
Make it a dirt bike trail or something, the neighbors wouldn't like that.
We had those, they're gone now, now bike path.
Is that right? Yeah?
Yeah, that's what, that's what everybody rode.
The, the big concern I see at this point would be the fact that there's really no a- access to most of this land. Especially what we own at this point, it's.
Limited access.
It's land, yeah, it's. It has, some of it has access that we can't use to. Put anything over.
Figure that out.
Yeah.
Vote in some easements, right?
I mean, the, the other thing is, is that even if we got access to it, we couldn't afford to build a no, new road. That's the other thing. So even if we had the access from one road, we'd then have these big landlocked areas where you'd have some access, but you couldn't really do anything else with it, unless somebody sold it and then developed it, which could happen.
Any sale you do would be at auction.
Yes.
And you might pick minimums, I think you can do that. So that you don't give it away. Okay.
Anything else on the zoning? Okay. Board of Selectmen Survey Draft continued as necessary, so I worked. On a new one, Peter actually just.
Do you have yours with you?
Yep, and so I took out all the override stuff. Cause I, and I, and I know doing two is probably not ideal, but I wanted to do two cause I kinda wanted to get our arms around.
He's not here.
Thank you.
Wasn't sure if you knew that. The Chair is unoccupied.
Yeah, one extra. So, kinda the regular intro I had last time, I said to watch tonight's meeting if they have questions. And so it just has a few questions. So the first one is, in your opinion, what is the most pressing need for the town of Millville? The budget, M E S water, something else in their space for them to write their answer? Um, the next question, what would you like to see happen with the Millville Elementary School building? Would you prefer to have students in the building, or would you prefer to have the building come back to the town as an asset? And be available for the town for other uses by the town? And I want to know this, cause I wanna know, like, what do people want us to do with the building? Like, how hard should we be pushing if we find out that the school committee won't put the kids back in that building? Like, are people mad about that? Do they want us to fight for them? Cause I don't know. I have, I see advantages to both, I, but I'm not sure.
I don't think they really understand, you know, the consequences for not putting the kids back in the building.
Well, what are the consequences, Richard?
Potentially could be lower hos- house valuations.
Yeah.
Because now you don't have.
A school.
A school in the dist-, you know, in the town.
In the town.
It's not locally, you know. I mean, I, I think.
What have you seen, how, can you talk a little bit more about that? Like, what's your experience with that? How have you seen that happen?
Well, I've done a lot of house shopping over the years.
Yeah.
And it's usually one of the things that they list as a perk. You know, local school, nearby, you know, sidewalks, you know, whatever, it's usually one of the selling points.
Okay.
And it definitely impacts the evaluation of the house.
Yep, okay.
So. I mean, you know, I hate to say it, but there, there could be an alternative, but, you know, we really should put the kids back in.
Yeah, no, I agree.
That would be the right thing to do.
I agree. I guess, I just wanted to see what other people thought too. And so at the top, I said, watch this meeting, so hopefully they'll watch it and see this.
They watch it, and they understand this could.
Understand.
Could impact house valuations and possibly income of the town, taxes.
Yep.
You know?
Liability for the M B S A.
Yeah.
Boiler project.
One and a half million dollars, yes.
Even if it's a remote possibility, it's still a possibility that needs to be thought of.
I don't know how remote it is if we're not using it as a school.
Right.
I think they would absolutely come down our street and be like, so, heard you're not, I don't have a school here anymore, we gave you a big discount on a loan.
What, a million dollar loan?
Yeah.
Just about.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
No, that's all really good points. And then, next question, so if a potential school configuration is to house pre-K children at the high school, would you be okay with this configuration? So this is something I heard from people, like, I don't know how firm this is, but that was just, and I. If I had pre-K kids, I wouldn't be comfortable with them being at the high school.
Can we, can we put just a little bit more information with the question, kinda like a ballot, you know?
Yeah.
Cause sometimes people, you know, they don't really follow along until they get to the voting, voting booth, you know?
No, we have room, so what do you wanna add, what do you wanna add and where?
No, I just think we should add inconsequential, especially with the, the whole Millville school thing. Maybe we talk about the possibilities, house evaluations. You know, taxes.
So I can add that for sure, so, um.
Just like, we spell it out, you know?
Yeah, no, absolutely, so if I add like, something to question number two, note.
Yep.
Lack of a school, lack of a local school building has been shown to have a negative impact on housing prices. Okay? Additionally. This could cause the town to lose the M S B.
Yeah, tax revenue and the, and the loan, incurring a million dollar liability.
So it's tax revenue and incur a one million dollar.
Call it debt.
Debt.
Tax burden.
One billion dollar tax, is it?
Taxpayer burden?
Taxpayer burden. Due to the boiler projects. Voted on at town meeting, do you remember which one that was, Andrew? Was it nineteen, eighteen or nineteen? Don't mess you way back, I could probably look it up on my, cause I was Chair of this, the Capital Planning Committee then.
It was one of those, it was, yeah.
I'll figure it out.
It, it would've been nineteen or twenty, yeah.
Then it was nineteen.
Nineteen. Happened since I've been here.
Yep, okay, that was nineteen. Cause then in twenty is, I was on the Board of Selectmen. It was nineteen. Okay. Good enough.
Would you put anything in as a contrarian, right? You know, you also have a building that would cost you sixty million to replace. If you were to build that building today, it's probably sixty million bucks. It's insured by the town to the tune of fifteen million. Which is a cost, you know, sort of a cost factor from back then. The question is, if you got that back, and you had to pay a million bucks back, or eight hundred grand is what I think. It's probably, well, what's the balance is right now for M S B A loan. And you get a building worth somewhere between fifteen and sixty million bucks that you could do something with, yet to be determined. There's, some might argue there's value to that, I would. But I'm not a taxpayer here. And I appreciate your real, you know, I think a driving factor to many decisions of folks in leadership is increased real estate values.
Yeah, so maybe underneath it, we put pros and cons, so these, what we say are potential cons. So a pro could be, although, the only reason why I hesitate, I don't, I hesitate a little bit to put what you said, Peter, on there, not because I don't believe it to be true.
Yep.
But because I don't have, like, I, I think, I, I feel confident saying not having a school in the district would be an issue. And I, I know that we'd have to pay back, or I don't know, but I'm paying back eight hundred thousand dollars is a real possibility, and that could be bad. Getting the building back, I don't know that we would have a buyer, or we would find one quickly, because look at what the church is, kinda been sitting there for a while.
Well, the other thing is, it's in a uh, was it Village Residential District, so.
It is very much in a residential district.
Whatever, exactly, so, whatever the use is, would have to conform to that, otherwise they'd have to go through a whole process, which would be very costly for whoever bought it, potentially.
Um, can we add a question or change a question?
Yeah. At, we can add a question or change, which one do you wanna?
Well, I'm, I'm, the whole, are you familiar with the M E S water situation, yes or no? I guess.
Yeah.
I'm not quite sure what you would get out of that if they said yes or no, I don't know.
I know, yeah, people are paying attention.
Which one would they pay attention, but, so, so here's my question. Can we ask if the residents would be, um, would approve or be accepting of a charter school in town?
Yeah.
So if they had an option to, to send the kids to a charter school, rather than.
Caution that, cause if you put that out there, they're gonna think that we have something, we don't have anything. And also, the chances of that aren't exactly.
If we could say, if we could repurpose the building for a charter school.
Yeah.
Would you like that?
Would you approve that?
It's still suggesting, that's my concern, cause.
It is, intentionally.
Yes, but you, we, we don't have that possibility, we'll, we have to be realistic. Well, come on.
But, but Andrew, think about it, cause.
I am, I'm thinking realistically.
It blows a dog whistle.
It's, no.
Oh, it does.
I don't think we can be realistic on.
See?
Approach for, if we're gonna repurpose one of the schools, and then on the other side, and not do a new high school. And then on the other side, repurpose the elementary school for a charter school, I feel like it's, I don't know if it's like, kind of against our, like, initial thought process.
The process for repurposing this building would be extraordinarily expensive and time-consuming, we're talking like a decade. I mean. Whoever bought it would have to go through a huge process, if it wasn't used for anything but a home, basically.
It's true.
That would be a huge thing, it's not in exactly a very accessible area, the roads that connect to it are very backwards. So any business would have to deal with that as a possibility.
Yes.
You could easily get lost in there, if you're not familiar with the area. I don't see it being very realistic, honestly, and I don't think we should, for those reasons.
I think it would be.
I mean.
Oh, I think so, and we can add the question, but I think we put parentheses, please note, we do not have any interested parties.
As of yet.
As of yet.
I mean, does, does anybody ever remember the disclosures?
But if you, it's gonna be big, I mean, it's gonna, and I'm, I'm not making it smaller.
Yes, but I'm saying, they're gonna remember that, they're not gonna remember the disclosure. And if, and that, once we start that, that's a whole can of worms, we don't wanna.
So think about it, what if, what if you were middle-income family, wha- whatever? And you didn't have the tax, you didn't have the money to pay the tax base of Sherburne. But Little Millville had a charter school that actually kinda ranked up there, and bringing some quality teachers, right? Cause those things are generally privately funded right now, would you pay to send your kids to a quality school and cheap taxes to live in a town, if you knew the school was nearby?
Realistically, what type of school would you be able to get? Even if they were able to sell.
Really nice building, I was in there.
Well, yes, but I'm saying, even if you were.
Really nice.
You have to go all of those hurdles.
Yeah.
Then you have to deal with the fact that we're out in not exactly the most industrialized center.
You're right.
Yeah, that.
So what's available, but, but what's available to other kids, do you mean, like, so what I, so I, I like this question, Richard, because, one. Like, we could, it keeps it as a school building.
Right.
Which protects the property taxes that were. And I don't know, like, cause the only charter school that I'm aware of is in Franklin. And then what's the other one, the Westway, I don't even know, so this would be.
Point is that they're in highly populated areas, cause they can get enough people.
So, but, but here's what it would do, so now, yeah, Franklin has a couple in, in the building, no, I'm sorry, Foxborough's a couple in the buildings, like, yeah. But if you put a charter school here in Millville, you can draw off student population from the area towns, we can pull from Blackstone, you can pull from Uxbridge, you know. That's what I'm saying. So I know, but still, that would pull some student population. That's what I'm saying. So I know, but still, that would pull some student population from BMR.
So I put, please note, we do not have any interest as of yet, but if many residents are interested in this, we could look into this. But may I, we would explore, we would explore this.
I'm thinking, I'm leaning towards instead of having a questionnaire, just having a fax sheet. Of saying what the current situation with different issues that are facing the town.
But we have to ask the questions, like the data.
Yes, but you can, the people need to be informed first. I mean, we don't exactly have the highest viewership here. Or at any other meetings, so to get the word out as to what's going on before we ask questions. Because an uninformed person will look at this and be like, oh, what the heck's going on? We're getting a charter school? You know, that that'll be the first thing you're thinking.
Probably putting a little bullet in there, right?
But so this is the sacrifice I'm making, Andrew. If you have questions or concerns, please email Jennifer Yellen. There's my email. And I will take all the questions. And then you can also message at the town hall for Jennifer Yell and Peter, and I left the main number. So like if they, thank you for taking time to give us your input, like I think. As I understand that perspective, Andrew, because like, for example, this was updated in twenty sixteen. I was not at that town meeting. I didn't know when the town meetings were. I didn't know where they were and I lived very close to the location of the town meetings. So like, I get that, but we have to, we can't be, I don't think we can say, no one's paying attention, so we can't ask the questions. I think that's a really bad thing to do.
No, but we should first try to make an effort to make sure everybody's clear on the basics, facts of everything as quickly as you.
Well, we have these meetings, they're videoed and posted and.
If I come home from work and I wasn't doing this, would I be sitting up and watching board of selectman meetings?
I do know of a couple. I actually do know a couple of people who do that. There aren't many though. Most people just see me and they're like, hey, what happened at the last meeting? And I give them the five minute rundown and that's it. Um but I think that we should. And I'm of the opinion, we really need the data and we need to understand. And if and if people aren't. Like if this question, they're wondering, do we have a charter school? Email me, call me out here.
It does, and it starts controversy and it brings attention to the light.
Have the, we don't have the resources nor the capability to handle the problems we have. Do you wanna start more?
Yep.
No.
I do, cause it because.
With all due respect, that's asinine. We need to fix what we have.
We are in the middle of fixing things.
Yeah.
We don't have the resources. We're barely struggling.
I know.
What are we doing?
I get, so what is your?
We need to solve the problems we have. We don't need to start new rumors. We need to educate the populace.
If we get the building back, we do need to solve that problem. And so this is a potential solution.
But that's not gonna be happening for the next year or two at best.
There are no kids in that building next year, Andrew, like I'm, MSBA will be here. In this meeting.
Yep.
I'd like a check for eight hundred thousand dollars. And then what are we gonna say? I'd be like, Andrew, do you have any money on you?
So if I, if I could speak as the capital planning committee chair, right? Or as a member, not speaking on behalf of the committee, okay, just my viewpoint. I I look at it as, if you gotta pay off the MSBA and it's eight hundred grand. You're getting an asset worth something with which you can do something else yet to be determined. And the list is quite significant, not not, I respect the fact that there may be hurdles to that. But I would argue that, let's say, it turned into um, you know, a commercial something or other there. A nursing home or something, right? And requires a zoning change. That's a doable thing in a reasonable amount of time, subject to voter approval. But one could argue that, you know, you sell it to a nursing home chain and they pay fifty million bucks for the thing. You know, that's a hard thing to vote against. That that's all, and I'm not trying to create rumors. I'm just using that as one example. I think the more likely and practical is a charter school possibility. I always use. I always use, you know, I always called it the UMass Millville. You know, solution as a possibility. So that's all I'm saying, so. And it really is subject to what BMR does with it, with its facilities, all of which is subject to what they decide to do, right? And and it's subject to voter approval of a lot of capital. Spending that they might have to do, whether it's renovate or replace different parts of different buildings. The and they're 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 doing their their uh study right now, right, feasibility study. Which will help inform, which will no doubt help inform then them and the rest of the community of the two towns. Where they're gonna go and the, when they took their first pass at it. Their solution was a two school solution, which was middle school and high school, which I liked on the capital committee. Because we get that building back. I still like getting that building back. That said, if they need to be a three school solution, that's clearly the better facility, I think. Than the complex for the element of the population, which is likely to be K through three or four. Maybe pre K through three or four, but I know there's a space limitation depending on the enrollments and. You know, I would defer to the school leadership on what those players.
But just to give people context on how long these processes can take, the last subdivisions we had in town were started before I was born. And I was on the board of selectmen when they were finished. So that can give you context for how long projects can take.
You're right.
That's so, even if, even if everything went terrifically, okay, and everything was sunshine and lollipops. That would not be even getting close to being done within the next ten years. And we're we're starting this thing out and we still have to face the fact that. What are we gonna, we're we're planning already to do and we're already dedicating time and resources towards doing a pipeline for that to make it a school, continue it as a school.
Subject to voter approval.
Yes.
And fu- you know, funding in which may include voter approval.
But we're still dedicating time and resources towards that.
Yes, we are.
And then we're gonna be planning to sell it or to get it back and sell it. Or something like, wh- we have to stick on a plan. And what what's our goal here? What what are we planning to use this for? Are we gonna keep it as a school or do we wanna sell it? Do we know?
I would like to have a data informed plan.
But we're not informing the people. They have, the, most of them aren't.
No, I'm asking these questions for the data.
But they are not informed as to what the problems are, what we're facing. They're not even aware probably of half the stuff where capital costs we're gonna deal with. Or the water issue, when that regulation comes in, and what every town is gonna do with that.
The the problem here is, Andrew, I think bulk of the residents here are um on the retirement spectrum. So most of them don't really have kids. Most of them really aren't informed. They're not really watching the meetings. They're not attending. I mean, we have one person here. This audience isn't very big. Um I, at some point, there's going to be some sort of a boom here, I think, coming. Um it's it's not today and it's not tomorrow, but it is coming. And I think if we get a school back in there, it will also help us negotiate with BMR as well. So if.
If we go down that path, it's too late to negotiate with BMR to get the school back, cause then we're already what, trying to sell it to somebody and then we're gonna pull the rug on them?
I don't think so. I think if they know that the opportunity is there for us to move on, we're not tied to them. We can get a charter school in there. Which will also bring in um some higher income families too, to help bolster the tax.
There, we don't have any developments.
Oh, it'll draw. It'll draw, because if if families that can't afford to live in higher, you know, cost communities. But wanna send their your kids to a quality school and we can get a quality school in here, recruit it with a nice building, we can then. Draw some people in and then also draw from the outskirts, the other area towns. You can pull back from Blackstone, you can pull from Uxbridge, bring some revenue in. With a lease, we can generate some revenue, bring it back to the town.
Yeah.
But we don't even have any developments in plan for to to have any nicer families, we need to have new developments. We haven't had them in thirty years.
But we can also pull from the other districts.
Yeah.
That's the nice thing about a charter school.
This just.
Unfortunately, times are changing here, we.
I don't think it's bad to ask a question.
They're changing. We're downward in population. The entire region is downward in population. Where are we gonna get a boom from?
It's kinda reversed, we we we. They're they're.
What trends?
They're gonna pass, Andrew. The boomers, the boomer generations are going to go.
Yes, and nobody's having kids. What are you talking about?
A lot of them are, and there are the big immigrant boom too. That revenue will be coming in.
According to the World Health Organization, every region, every continent except for Africa is going to be declining. By exact, by highest percentages. Where are these people gonna be coming from to populate the entire world? What are you, what are we talking about? Where's the population boom?
You you just got a big immigration boom coming over. They will grow, they will settle and they will, they will settle in, they will.
Once you have higher paying jobs, people have less kids. We're a developed country. You don't have baby booms.
Which is why we're pulling from over the border.
Yes.
Yes.
But once they come here, they're not gonna continue to have the same size families, even if they do.
Then they will continue.
And this is a theoretical thing that this happens. These are all theoretic theories on, built on theories, built on theories.
But Andrew, you can't sit here with an empty building thinking.
You have to plan for the, planning doesn't revolve around planning for the best case scenario. It revolves around placing your plans on the worst case, so that no matter what happens, you're solidified.
We should be planning for.
Having more kids? I've already had two.
You've had two, so you, you, for a family to be, to a population to have, to grow, you have to have more than two kids. How many families do you know have more than two kids?
I'm just saying, so.
Where?
What do you do?
One, one out of three in the table.
Matthew, you getting married soon? Time to have some kids. Andrew wants to fill the school.
No, I'm saying it's realistic. People are having less kids. People aren't even having kids nowadays.
But this is, I think this is a good strategy, is to entertain the opportunity for a charter.
I think we should be asking the question and I always like, I always feel weird when people are like, I don't want you asking that question. I'm like, why don't you want us to have the data?
I'm fine with asking questions, but they have to be realistic and also we have to inform people before we ask them questions.
But it's just, we're just asking, why, so if we said, so this is what I wrote down. If we could repurpose the building, let me put the element, the Millville Elementary School building as a charter school. Would you be interested in that? Please note, we do not have any interest as of yet. But if many residents are interested, we would explore this possibility. And that's all it says. And it's not like that's, we will explore this possibility. And that's like, it could fall, do you want me to write like? Nothing could come of this, like it could all fall apart, like that's that's all that it was exploring the possibility.
How many, how many projects that we have that we're currently working on that are big projects?
But Andrew, we need to know like what to do with this building if we get it back and like we don't have.
If we get it back, they're starting that plan, that could take how many years?
So we're gonna go the mill, the bill, we're going.
We have to fix, we we are working on our town hall, have, when's that, what what, are we getting that done? Where are those costs gonna, when those costs coming in? What are we gonna be doing with that? Or are we gonna be working on the pros, the fifteen different solutions for the school?
So we add that question to the survey, is that what you want?
No, what I'm saying is we have to prioritize what our goals are. We have to finish goals before we add new goals.
So the town hall, we don't have it on the agenda, so we can add for the next one, but that's moving along.
Moving along, yes, but I'm saying.
Nothing moves fast, Andrew.
You just don't start three additions on your house at the same time and then say, oh, well, that's out of pool.
The question.
I don't like the fact that we don't have any plan and we're, we're working with plans that we're going in good faith with a bunch of different parties with. That are completely opposite to that. We don't have any basis for.
Moving forward with good faith.
The pipeline, the fact that we're gonna, we're saying that's continuing to be a school. We want the kids to come back to that school, but then we're planning also to sell the school to create a new charter school.
So. You think that there's, I don't feel like it's a good faith effort from the school committee to put those kids back. But based on the meeting we had in December, when they said in the meeting, we didn't add, we didn't move the kids because of the water notices. I was like, are you kidding me right now?
I'm in full agreement with that, but I'm saying.
So it doesn't sound like they're gonna put the kids back. So we need to have a plan B. So a potential plan B could be a charter school and would the town be interested in us pursuing that?
So then do we drop the all the other projects then?
What do you mean?
Well, right now, even in our our budget guidance, we're gonna double the budget for the water.
So if we use this as a school building, we still need to supply water. So why would we, why would we not do?
If we're selling it, why would we bother?
We're not gonna sell it, we'll lease.
We collect revenue.
And so collect revenue. So it's an a recurring revenue source for us for many, many years to come.
Correct.
I would not sell that building if possible, like I would do everything I could to keep that as a lease. And then when we have the water, when we tap into Uxbridge, provided that's a possibility, then. It's an ongoing revenue source. I would not sell it. Is that, that's kinda where I'm.
Seems contrary to what the the ti- town administrator has been saying.
No, I think this was one option. So Peter, I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, no, I, first of all, I re- fully respect and appreciate your sentiment that we. If you try to juggle too many balls and you drop one, they all go.
Yeah.
Right? So we gotta be careful of that. And and somebody has to do so, a lot of the juggling and. And it's hard, and so I do appreciate that sentiment. But I think this is just trying to get a read of what people think, which might, to me at least. We're in both the town administrator hat and the capital hat, okay? I think any information you get from people, even though they're not well informed necessarily. Is useful to help you all decide sort of which way you wanna help. Influence or or, you know, provide a overcome inertia to move something in a particular direction. Because there are unknowns right now. We don't know if BMR leadership. Are comfortable enough to put students back in the school next year as an example. That's the short term. On the larger term and on your agenda, you're gonna talk about it. The the, on the nearer or the further term, not a, not the short term, but the next term. Is they're gonna move kids around anyway, regardless of what their facility. Longer term facility plans are. And then they have their longer term facility plans, all of which influences back to this question. And so that's why it's helpful to, you know, at least, you know, encourage, bring the kids back to MES. Encourage the two school solution is the better one, if that's one of the options that come out of the feasibility. You know, I that, I I don't know how else to do it. And it is a lot of juggling. And we don't have resources, right? So even the experts thing, you know, the reality of that. If I were to bet on it, I I I don't know how I would bet, okay? I I'd say so. You know, even if we got a million dollars for which we thought we would know about.
Yesterday.
Before Christmas.
Yeah.
Right? We know nothing. Even if it was a million dollars, it's gonna cost more than that. And there's money coming out of taxpayers' pockets. That might otherwise be needed for other things, like those facilities, like. Maybe the town hall thing that we think we can do for a certain amount might not come in on that, then we have to rethink. You know, that's a ball in the air, right, of juggling right now? I I don't know, I don't know. So I, I I'm not contrary to what you're thinking. But it's a big chip to play, that's cool. That's a big chip to play. It's in play. It's in play, I, you know, I don't know how else to think. And you, you're the landlord, you you the town owns it. You got a long term lease agreement. If it comes back, you 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 got MSBA issues, but if it comes back, like I say, I like that idea for. All the possibilities.
Just, just.
But it's more balls in the air.
What are the ramifications for us to break the lease agreement?
You can't, that's a reasonable agreement, although. Past practice would suggest that it's possible to break the, you know, breach the lease agreement without any impact or ramifications.
Correct.
Oh, did I say that?
Past precedence.
Yes. So I don't know, but I don't think that's.
That's my conversation for today. So let's, um. So I was hoping to get this finalized today, cause I wanted to get it out this week. But I'm okay waiting if everyone else is okay, unless what he, well, what does everybody else think? That's my opinion. I know other people have opinions.
Are we going to add a question about the um garden community project?
We can add that, sure.
Where the uh septic.
Yep.
Leach field was.
No, that's a thing that we're, we're gonna research more.
We're gonna research more, but we don't want, we shouldn't ask questions about that.
You can, well, I think you already have decided that you wanna move in that direction. Subject to the type of garden that goes in there. And the type of garden may be influenced by whether or not there is in fact.
Just to try to get some participation from the residents, put them on notice, you know?
So what would be the question that you would wanna ask?
I don't know.
Cause the alternative thought was to. You know, get a riverway walk on the seventeen acres we have or whatever it is. But that wouldn't be prevented by having a garden in there, in my view. And to do that does require funding, for which the only way I would. And to do that does require funding, for which the only way I would encourage doing it is from funding from other sources, not taxpayers.
So I don't mind asking a question, provided it's going to influence, have the potential to influence something. So if we ask a question about the garden and people say they don't want it, are we gonna go back to the garden club and say, forget it, we're not gonna give you a garden anymore?
No, I, I would probably ask, I would probably ask something of, you know, what, what would you like to see along the walkway and or garden? You know, maybe what, what kind of fixture, just to try to get some community.
Do you have any suggestions for?
Suggestions, any kind of flowers? I mean, would you like walkway? I mean, yeah, just to get participations. I think, you know, sending on a notice to the folks that aren't watching, to let them know that this project is kind of underway.
I, I have a feeling that the garden club would have a plan of what they wanna plant, regardless of what people's opinions are.
Of course they would, Andrew, but still, it entices participation.
Yeah.
That's the idea.
So when I did the first survey, well, I shouldn't say I, I typed it. We did the first survey. Um, we did get some responses where people said, thank you so much for asking this. No one's ever asked my opinion on anything ever. Since I've been, lived here twenty years. And no one's asked me for feedback. So I know this sounds kind of like, I've seen comments on social media, oh, that's so cute. People are really appreciative. And they wrote that and were like, thank you for asking me what I care about. Thank you for asking me my opinion. Now they can always come here and tell us their opinion. We have public forum in every single meeting. Andrew remembers a time when there was no public forum. That was ridiculous, not to allow people in the town to speak to the elected officials was just atrocious. I just can't even talk about it. That was bad leadership and bad selectmen.
I said, I did vote against.
I know you did, Andrew, but you know, for whatever reason, no other people who were elected thought they needed to listen to their constituents, so whatever. Um, so this is, we, and we do have that ability, but some people can't make it here. And this is kind of easy, especially like they can email me, I'll go to their house and pick up the survey, they can call here. They can put it in the lockbox outside. Like we have many different ways to get this information back to us. So. I know you're getting back to how this started with the garden club. Do we have suggestions? Like, yeah, the garden club perhaps suggests, but if they have any thoughts too, like why not ask?
Do you wanna ask if anybody would participate or volunteer? With the garden?
But aren't you like, you've already.
We have.
Worked with the garden club. So it's really their project.
It is.
That you're allowing them to do once the area's been cleared by volunteers with equipment, cool equipment, right?
So maybe how about a general question of how can we get more participation from residents?
There you go.
I think that's a good one.
That's a good, that's a better question. Did you hear what I'm driving at?
Yeah.
Yeah, we know there's a finance committee that has two openings and we're heading into budget season and I'm pretty sure they could use some help. Big time.
I didn't hear a thing. You just said. Nothing about that earlier committee either. I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I know that.
Very selective hearing. It's the green energy, uh, just.
And even if someone thinks they might think they wanna do it. They're hesitant or they don't feel confident. They think, you know, any, any effort is valuable.
Yeah. And even if you can't make it to, like I, I don't usually miss meetings, but there's like, you know, like someone missed a meeting, it's like, that's fine. There's still four of us here. Like you might not make every single meeting, that's okay.
There's no deadlock of some important vote. Andrew was anticipating it though.
So how can we get more participants from residents in the town? For example, there are two openings on the finance committee.
That's fair.
Okay. So then I'm gonna take out the public garden one because it's, that was kind of more specific. So actually we could say, um, for example.
I just think that it puts folks on notice that there is activity there. So it's not more, it's, it's, it's not about the question, it's more about the notice, but you know. It's like, now you got it in writing, something's going on, something exciting. Don't complain about the weeds growing through the playground. It's a big public forum tonight.
That's right. Okay, so how can we get more participation from the town? For example, there are two openings on the finance committee and we are working on converting the old playground at the police station to a public garden as well. Resident participation is important to make these projects successful.
I like it. I think even Matthew will probably plant a rose, nice rose bush. What do you think?
That may happen.
Green energy, maybe?
That's a little slower pan on the top of it.
I really need to know how to grow stuff. If the big one hits, the Gill family will be very hungry.
Don't tell me you saw that movie too.
What movie?
The Leave the World Behind. The Obama co-produced Leave the World Behind on Netflix. The plot's terrible. It's just a scare.
I have several friends who are preppers.
Yeah.
And they tell me, I'm like, stop telling me this, you're worrying me and I shouldn't be worried.
Yeah.
So, and that's, yeah, anyways, that's a conversation for another day. Okay, so I have most pressing, what would you like to happen in the Millville School with the pros and cons? Potential pre-K at the high school, do you like it? The charter school question, the participation question. Um, if we have a budget deficit, would you prefer to override or trim costs? Please check what, should we just take out the override questions altogether? Okay, so why don't we do that? And then if you have anything else you would like to say, is there anything else you'd like to say? Like just an open-ended. So someone, it's funny, someone put, um, thank you Jennifer Gill for doing the survey, like it was so helpful. And someone else put the whole board of selectmen is terrible. I hate them all. So some of the bad comments were just.
Before you kind of know.
I know. Well, it's just cause like, you're so brave putting it on the survey, you know what I mean? Come to a meeting, offer us and just don't say things are terrible. What are your suggestions to make it better? Do you have suggestions or you're just gonna sit and throw rocks? Because I sat and throw rocks too. And now look at me now.
Big chair.
In the big chair, that's right. Um, okay. And then I did put like, uh, just a note to your point, Richard, on using this as a opportunity to inform. Just a quick update on the Animal Entry School Water. The school's had issues with the water since twenty sixteen, which we can support with test reports, although others have approached us and said that we have issues for more than twenty years. I just put twenty sixteen because that's the data that we have testing from. So if someone said, when do you have documentation to support the issue? I can say that. But like you saw in the school committee meetings, like this has been going on for twenty years, it's been going on for thirty years. Like I, I wasn't here twenty years ago, no. Um, or thirty years ago, so I don't know. Um, but I put, we have been effectively managing the water for the last quarter and all readings in compliance since October. Only one month of the school year where children would have been in the building was out of compliance. And I put a link to the page that we have on our website.
That's fair.
Okay. So do you wanna approve and send this out tonight or do we wanna wait a couple more weeks? I don't mind either way.
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good too.
Okay.
Okay, Andrew?
We all know my opinion.
No, so to be honest, I know we give, I, I know I give Andrew a hard time. I shouldn't make, I do the we's on the things that are bad and the I's on whatever. So I give Andrew a hard time. But, um, it is helpful, Andrew, your perspective, it really is. Like I like the contrarian, it's good for us to think about. Um, but I do think that getting the data, and even if it's like, if we get fifteen people to respond, it's fifteen data points I wouldn't have before. So, and people aren't coming to the meetings, so this is a way to do that.
Andrew, if you decide to have a family and the charter school opens, I will donate my selectman's salary to cover the first child's tuition.
I enjoy being the chicken little of the group, so it's all good.
Yeah, every little bit helps. I just, I can't do enough. I'll, I'll help you out with that at least.
Okay.
Okay.
So I will make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's Survey and send it out as reviewed in this meeting.
I'm seconding it. I'm all over.
You, Richard?
I'm like a ninja.
Any further discussion? Seeing now I'll call for the vote. Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Nay.
Aye. Matthew?
Aye.
Okay.
Questioned it there, buddy. You paused.
Oh, I was just holding you in suspense.
Okay, so I'll make updates and I'll email it to Peter and he can send it out to all of you. Um, and then I'll work with Diane this week to get it out. Okay.
Super.
Okay, old business. How long, oh, I feel like, I don't, doesn't it feel later? It doesn't feel like it's eight fifteen, eight twenty, it feels later, anyway. Okay, MES water status update, if any.
Yep. So just, uh, really the, nothing's changed from what you saw at the last presentation, except for this week. Notices will be going out as expected for the disinfection byproducts, the two disinfection byproducts because of the annual quarterly moving average way they calculated. So those notices have been submitted to us from DEP. Some editing, gonna go back to them tomorrow with some suggested edits of what we, we would like to have in there, subject to their approval. And then those notices will be posted at the school, uh, on the school website, on the town website with my transmittal email where I sent it to the thirty-eight people supposedly working at MES, identify as working at MES. Separately, and in addition is a notice that just is required a semi-annual lead and copper test results is, i- is, are taken and in ten locations in the building. And they all passed beautifully. So it's, but it's a required notice that will go out to the same population.
Saying that everything passed.
That, and, and everything passed. That's correct. Okay, so that's on there. In your packets, you see are two sort of one of two, one of one, two and two of two, just some emails for your information. The first one being, you know, Mary Jude Pigsley had some concerns about some things that she understood to be uh, 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 not submitted or not provided regarding testing and so forth. And each of the items for which she had concerns have been, uh, addressed by Dr. Gulick in this email. So we, you know, some of the items, uh, confusion was uploading of some test results from the, the subcontractor to the contractor we used for the testing. And, uh, those have all been taken care of and the data has been provided by Dr. Gulick. So, yeah, that's there. The second one is just, you know, a back and forth between Gulick and, and, uh, folks at DEP. Going back even to August where he was looking to get some things changed and do things slightly differently based on science and results and so forth. And you can see I weighed in by clarifying the, I took the opportunity to weigh in on the conversation by correcting the population size that was used in some submitted. And the key thing is the last line, item where I said Gulick has made numerous requests for clarifications as well as modifications of testing and reporting, and we'd appreciate timely response. And I can tell you that I have a slew of response emails to each of those going back. So that, that was good to see the responsiveness uh, at last. And, uh, so that's that. Um, separately, uh, you all have been invited. The school on Thursday night is having another school committee meeting where they're gonna talk about what to do with MES water. And so I'll just hand out, you know, the, and, and part of it was precipitated by Jen asking the question. I think you have a copy of this, but here's another one. You know, it, it, she's been, Jen's been trying to get from Mass DEP clarification as to, uh, how we would lift the bottle, what, what's required to no longer have to provide bottled water. And, uh, we still don't have that answer back. But she also provides some clarification about, uh, asking to know when it's on their agenda. And so this is the notification, it's gonna be on their agenda. And we've all been invited. So I'll post a meeting just in case. You all do show up there. Um, and it can be done by Zoom, Tim tells me. So, uh, I might participate by Zoom rather than come out for that. It's not a normal day to be here, but I wanna be able to be a reference for questions that might arise. Questions that I would anticipate they might ask you is, are the same questions they asked before, uh, at the last meeting, one of which was, you know, would the town, uh, continue to provide bottled water even if not required by Mass DEP? That's something for you all to think about. I, I know what I would advise on the answer to that. Secondly, they might ask, they, they express concern, so they might ask about, uh, creating larger demand for water, because right now the demand is very small. And my, where, in the position I sit regarding the water as the water, oh, the owner of the water system, if you will. Um, I would, my answer would be have at it. To, you can provide all the demand you want. But I would not wanna pay for our higher-priced operators to create demand. And the creation of demand is sitting there while a faucet. So, uh, but they would respond and react to any changes in demand and adapt the, you know, what the system has to do to treat the water properly. So have at it. You wanna run faucets all day long in various offices? Go for it and they'll.
Yeah, we'll see how it works.
They'll put in the right amount of chlorine and the right amount of phosphates and I don't know what else that they do to keep the lead copper down and all that sort of stuff. Okay, so those are the two things I would anticipate. But I think they might also wanna just gain further comfort that the system will continue to be paid attention to, so that we'll continue to comply. Now, we can't guarantee it will continue to comply. But, you know, everything that has been done, as we explained in the, to you guys at your last meeting, as well as them at the meeting we were at, shows that we're doing exactly what we said needed to be done and we would be doing back last August.
Yeah, and we're still doing it.
And that's on the website.
Yeah. So, um, just to add a little bit, so I, as Peter mentioned, I, I asked Mary Jude what the compliance requirement was to not need to provide water. And she said, I need more than one quarter. And I was like, I understand that. But I haven't got how many quarters. So like, you know, Peter and I were talking, like, we wanna play by the rules. But what are the rules? So what's the, and I'm assuming there's a policy, maybe there isn't, but I'm assuming that there's a policy that says once we've instructed you to provide bottled water, we need to see two or three or four quarters of compliance to lift that requirement. I would think that's something that's kind of standard.
Or consecutive.
Yeah, right, consecutive, two, three, four, that's what I meant, consecutive quarters.
Probably open to discretion.
Really? No policy? That's so weird to me.
The state, I can tell you that's oftentimes what happens. They have oversight, but.
All right. Okay, so I'll follow up with her on that. And then, um, and this kind of, this came up, I don't know if you remember in the meeting, like would we still provide bottled water if we were not required to? And I can't remember who, who asked this, but someone said, what if the data spikes one quarter? Or one month? And Mass DEP doesn't require bottled water on a one-month spike. Because you're not getting no exposure to these disinfection byproducts. You're having exposure to them. Elevated exposure over years is what's the issue. A one-month of exposure is not the issue. Other, and if you have an issue with that, then you should speak to Mass DEP and tell them to change their rules and say that out of compliance for one month requires bottled water. That's not what it is with Mass DEP. If you have a one-month increase on any of these numbers, they don't require you to provide bottled water because that limited exposure is not an issue. So change the rules that then, I don't know, EPA or Mass DEP, those are the rules that we're following.
I would say it depends if the kids are back there or not.
So, yeah, like, I mean, and I said in the meeting on Thursday when we were there, like I would be okay providing bottled water for like the first month of school. Just to make sure that that month stayed, you know, with the increase and whatever. And I know, um, and Roland has mentioned this before, and since he was talking about his wife, I know she can confirm this, that. She handles, manages cafeterias and you use bottled water for cooking all the time, regardless. Right? In their schools, no?
No.
Oh, he said you did that, so he lied.
We had a problem with the water at one point and we used.
Bottled water? Okay. But once it was corrected, you didn't use bottled water anymore for cooking? Okay.
What do we spend a month on, on bottled water?
It's nominal because it's a small population. So I don't, I don't know the amount, but it's just.
Last year during, during.
I don't know. I don't know.
They went through the whole fifteen thousand dollars for the potable.
Potable water, but I'm saying bottled water.
We, we, we spent nothing on the bottled water last school year for MES. Because we weren't required to. Until Mary Jude Pigsley, in an email, said that we were required to. So that goes to your, it's a judgment of, it's a discretionary decision. That goes to your, it's a judgment of, it's a discretionary decision by. People in power, but it is not, I would argue it's not even any written policy because they have. You know, whole communities with high DBPs. Where they don't provide any bottled, it's suitable for drinking, consistent with the long-term exposure. Health risk.
I just didn't know if there was a dollar figure we could put on that to kinda get an idea.
The school did the bottled water by choice.
I mean, I just hypothetically, you know, we come to some sort of agreement, the kids go back in, everybody's hungry, all right, you know, maybe it's a goodwill, uh, yeah, all right, we'll make you. Comfortable, we'll give you bottled water for three months or six months. I, I don't know.
Yeah, I thought the first month of school, but I would be okay if you wanna make it two months.
I don't know, I just don't know what it costs, so.
If we do six months, we might as well just do the whole school year. That's like.
If they got the kids back in, everybody's happy, then, you know.
Well, then why did we spend all this money to fix it?
Well, they said it wasn't about the water.
Well, then why do they need bottled water if it's not about the water?
I don't know.
We don't know why.
But if it makes them happy, then it doesn't matter.
So I don't, so why are we just, so we're, I don't. So we're doing things without like rhyme or reason then at that point. So we're just trying to make people happy on a whim because they. Want bottled water without any requirements or need?
Not necessarily.
Because I don't think, I'm uncomfortable with. The tax, the payment of that bottled water if it's not necessary, especially after we invested six figures into fixing the water. That's my position.
Right.
Like, we spent a hundred thousand dollars to fix this with support from the people in Millville, giving us another sixty thousand at the special town meeting. And now after we tell everyone we're fixing this, we're working on it, blah, blah, it's like, so thank you for fixing that, we don't care and still want the bottled water. I have a problem with that. We fixed it. And I will say in the meeting, Dan Keefe and another gentleman, Dutton, Charles Dutton.
Yes.
We're like, why would they give us bottled water if they're saying the water is good? So they seemed very like reasonable. They've said they fixed it. I don't understand why we're asking for bottled water. Now, if we wanna have a transitionary period to your point, like the first. Thirty, sixty days of school. Provide bottled water to make sure like those systems keeping up. If it doesn't, and we do see that over those two months, even without the average, I would be okay revisiting at that time. And continue to provide bottled water for sure.
That's why I was just wondering what the cost would be.
Yeah, so if the test, if it's like, oh, my God, now they're flushing the toilets and washing their hands and blah, blah, and the, and the, they spike up again. In September and again in October. Okay, then I would do bottled water again in December and then we could take it out of the, a month-to-month basis. And then I would kinda have bigger questions around soon. I don't think that will happen, but if it is, I would, I would support that.
Just to kinda, right, use it as a chip, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
Does that make sense to everybody? Like, if they were, if it was spiking in September and October?
Yeah.
Okay, so I definitely be like, we'll provide you bottled water for the first. I would, we can, and this isn't, we'll have a discussion on this maybe more formally, but sixty days. Actually, you know what? We should maybe have a vote on that since we're gonna go to the meeting on Thursday. And this bit me in the butt on the July twenty-fifth meeting and they used Peter's quote because we didn't vote on it. And the email that went to fifteen hundred parents saying, I don't know if they're gonna provide bottled water because we didn't vote on it, because I couldn't say we voted on it. So now we're gonna vote on it.
But my quote was that Mass DEP had not ordered us to provide bottled water. And I sought the clarification from Mary Jude Pigsley, who said in her email, which you all have seen, right? She said, no, we haven't provided an order, an official order. We can, and you can, you know, appeal it if you wish. Otherwise, what I said, essentially what she said is the rule, and that's what we're operating on. And I, and I, and while I'm talking, I would also just throw in further confusion to the conversation.
More confusion's great.
Is what, what your next agenda item discuss, some of your next agenda item discussion may relate to.
Yes.
Right, so you're gonna agree to provide bottled water, which is contrary. And absorb the cost, which is contrary to the regional agreement terms.
Uh huh.
Yep.
So you're gonna continue that, even though in your August fourteenth meeting, you didn't vote on that. But you provided me uniform guidance that we should follow the regional agreement, which is to operating costs, which we haven't done. We've covered all of the nut.
Yeah.
In good faith and keep the peace and all those good reasons.
Yes.
It's the best interest of the town.
Best interest of the town. Very good, Richard Sehys.
You're a politician.
Okay.
That's why I'm in the big seat, right? Right across from you.
Um, okay, so I will make a motion that we can provide, that the town of Millville will provide bottled water. To the Millville Elementary School through the first two months of the school year. The twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. As a good faith effort and to ensure that the testing is in compliant, the water testing is in compliance. And this can be revisited as compliant, as test results become available.
You wanna handicap yourself to the first two months?
I wanna start with the first two months?
Yeah.
And if the first two months.
Wanna say we'll supply it for sixty days as needed and we'll revisit after the fact? I, I'm just asking, I don't.
So I don't, does it matter? I would say the first two months of school, or for sixty days of school?
I'm saying if they don't need it. Like, like you said earlier, if they don't need it. Now, if it spikes later on the road, then you can give them there.
Well, uh, one thing I have on this is.
Yes.
We're giving this to them when they haven't asked for it yet, have they?
They did ask, in the meeting, Tara Larkin and someone else said, why wouldn't she provide bottled water? So Charles Dutton and Dan Keefe were both like, why would they provide bottled water when the water is fine? However, if we look at the demand question, that was, that they said. Would if, when you put all the students back and you're using the system, you're putting more load on the system. That could cause different things to happen with the water. So we could say, we'll provide bottled water for the first sixty days, two months, whatever we decide. And continue testing, provided that testing, we show not a significant, still in compliance. Then they use the regular water, cuz now it's like with the, all the kids back in the building for these sixty days. Blushing toilets, washing their hands, doing this. There's been no, we're still in compliance, the water's still okay.
Just, just for clarity, if I could, when you use the term compliance, right? The halocetic acid compliance threshold is based on the quarterly averaging, but it's sixty, right? That's the maximum contaminant level. But you're out of compliance if.
Average.
Your quarterly average, the annual rolling average exceeds that. So if you had, let's say, in the month of October. We've, well, we will have cleared out the need for, let's assume we continue to. Provide, not exceed that for any significant, by any significant amount of the sixty MCL, parts per billion. In any of the remaining months of this school year and July and August and September. And we, we hit a seventy-five in October. Does that trigger?
Yes, I think it does. I think so, don't you? I think it does.
So exceeding in any month's test, official test, the MCL.
Of sixty or eighty for the trihalomethanes, yeah.
Why, I was saying, why do we restrict it the first few months? Why not just say, we'll provide it for sixty days? For the fiscal, for school year, whatever, until, unless.
I think they wanna see the first sixty days to see how the load increases with the population of the school.
That was a request, was the first sixty days?
They did not have a request for the first sixty days, but their concern was with an increased load on the system that the system wouldn't be. Able to keep up.
There's variables.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's, okay.
Fine, so you, you made a motion?
So, and I think, well, let me amend the motion. So it would be if any, if the individual. Month of September or October exceeds sixty parts per billion on the halocetic acid. Or on the month of September, October exceeded the eighty parts per billion on the trihalomethanes. And you should all be impressed that I knew that by heart. Looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Richard. Any further discussion?
Yep.
Yes.
So, well, my concern is that, A, the board, school committee at this point isn't, hasn't given us a vote on that. They want this, there seems to be not a consensus cuz we've mentioned that two at least members vocally said that that wasn't needed. We're giving this to them without any guarantees or any signs at this point, what their opinion or what they're going to be doing. We've done that in the past and I think that's bitten us in the butt a few times because we've given them stuff and we then have nothing to show for it in the end. The last point is, is that until we get a clear consensus as to what their issues are at this point, considering that. At the last meeting, they said it wasn't the water. I don't know what we are supposed to be doing to fix, fix the, the problem. So I'd rather have a clear understanding as to what their issues are. And then be able to remedy them, then assume what their issues are and try to remedy them preemptively.
So the reason why I want to preempt is because we can go into the meeting and say, if the, well, I'm not comfortable. With the system, we can say we're provide, we're providing the water. And if they say we don't need this on our next meeting, we can undo the vote, it's only January. So we have plenty of time. This way we go in and say that we're coming in, we're offering you, we will provide bottled water for sixty days. Um, we're gonna be talking about a couple other things too that we can do to make their lives easier and better. So I think we're showing our willingness to compromise and collaborate. And do what we can, exactly, and do what we can to put the children back in the school. And have people feel comfortable and good about that. And it, it'd be hard in the butt, Andrew, we didn't take this vote before cuz they were like, well, you didn't vote on it on the July twenty-fifth meeting. And I went there on July twenty-eighth, twenty-seventh. So it was twenty-fourth was our meeting and twenty-seventh, so it was three days later, it was on Thursday. And like, well, you didn't vote on this, so we can't trust you to provide bottled water. And so now we can go in there and say, well, we voted on it in August and now we're voting on it again.
We also voted at, what was it, the May or June meeting? To supply them with water for, to pay for the water, supply it to the school through the end of the school year and also pay cover some of the bills. Which, again, to Peter's point, is unclear as to whether or not it's required in the regional agreement. And then a month later, they, they took all, they decided to take all the kids out, basically. So. I, I don't want to give presents to people in a sense, might not be the best word to use for it, but. Without any guarantees as to what we're dealing with. Cuz we, we still don't have any reason as to why they don't want, or what's holding them back from moving the kids into the school at this point. So what if it turns out to be something else that we don't know? And then we have to revote on this, revote on a new thing and try to fork on that. I'd rather get a clear understanding as to what their issues are before doing anything. And also, I'd rather not do any, incur any cap. Costs of so, any sort without having, that might be outside of the purview of the regional agreement. Considering that might be a thing we might have to deal with in the future.
So, that's fine, I just, I disagree. Sorry, Andrew.
No, I expected, yes.
Should we take a vote?
Any further discussion? So you know now, call for the vote, Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Nay.
Aye, Matthew?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so at least we can go to the meeting and say we voted on that, should you want it. And then the second part, um, is also pertinent to the regional agreement. So if we look at section. Three. D. Okay. So three, three D states. Grade configurations in each school are established by the committee. Students shall attend schools on the recommendation of the superintendent and vote of the committee. Any proposed change in grade level school assignment, not including students with disabilities, shall include a public hearing before a positive committee vote. Of at least two-thirds of all committee members. This vote must take place at least by January first in order for that change to be implemented. In the following school year. So this did not happen last year. Um, and additionally, if you watch the July twenty-seventh meeting, they said it was a temporary move for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. It was brought up in that meeting that if they were to move the students, they would be in violation of the agreement because they didn't have this hearing. Which, now, so now we're following the agreement. We didn't follow the agreement, we moved the students the first time, but now we're following the agreement this time. So I would like to ex, make an extension so that they can be in compliance and say that we would be open to extending that January first. Through to March first. So you can give them an additional fifty-three days from today. To have their votes and have their public hearing. And then we could, Peter, I, well, once we finish the vote, I'd like to, you to inform Blackstone and see if there'd be amenable to taking a similar vote. So that way they'd still be in compliance.
Can I just offer some background information because, and I'll give you, I'll pass those along. Because, you know, I had a conversation with Dr. DeFalcone, a preview of the budget issues that he's facing. This was before Christmas. And I talked about whether the, I've talked about this particular. Issue of having a public hearing. In, in, and my interpretation is that in his mind. It doesn't apply, they still believe it doesn't apply to moving the kids out nor moving them back for MES. Even though you all voted and had a legal letter that said that was a breach of the regional agreement. And so the, the query was, shouldn't they still follow the agreement just to put the kids back? Separate to that issue, so the, the superintendent believes that three D does not apply. Then, nor does it apply now, should they make a decision at any time between now and the, let's say, the end of the school year to move the kids back. They can do that. That, that's what they think, even though we think that's not consistent in following the regional agreement. Separately, and this is where the su, the consideration of extension really comes in. And it relates more towards budget savings, you know, for both communities. Is if they can consolidate buildings. And, and the thought was to move kids around. Such that, and probably put them back in MES. And the middle school and the high school. And so they, they'd go to a three-school solution. They view the complex as one building, even though Desi has it as two, FYI, okay, and they're named two. But it's, they view it as one building regardless, okay? So this extension allows them to cover both, both opportunities of the bigger picture. Which is cost savings and emptying out one of the buildings. Thinking maybe the complex if they're comfortable moving the kids back to MES. And do that in time for this year's budget cycle. And that would save money and allow them to plan for it properly. How they move them and all of that is yet to be determined. He suggested some possibilities, that's why Jen had the question about pre-K. At the high school, that might solve a space problem of what he might wanna do if it goes to MES. Okay, so I just wanna point that out. You know, council, yours truly, and you in the past believed that three D did apply. To the movement out of the students from MES. And therefore arguably it applies now, and they didn't do it in time. But not worth, you, you didn't press the issue. Doesn't sound like you wanna press the issue, but again, an extension allows for this. For MES alone and potentially the bigger picture should they wanna do that. That's all. And, and legally, can you do it? I think it's more a side letter and a vote. And so if you, you go forward. With a positive vote on that, this extension. That can be presented to them on Thursday night and prior to that, obviously. And the legal issues can be finalized in terms of a side letter or something, presumably. It's not requiring, hopefully, ideally, it doesn't require a, you know, a town meeting, vote and all of that.
Well, there'll be a public hearing.
They'll have had that public hearing, that's right.
So thoughts? Do we think March first is long enough? Do we care if they don't make the decision until April first or June first? I think one thing is for sure is that it's been proven that they don't require many months of notice to make these changes. So.
And they have to finalize their budget by, you know. And they have to finalize their budget by, you know, March, early March, I think they do. I think they certify their budget.
They blew it up last year with this move. Don't know that anything matters.
What what, what are the, what's the school standing on right now for to justify their move in the summer?
Last summer? They said it was unsafe. And they they used in part, large part the statements made by the um by when she said the water was unsafe to drink and unsafe to cook it. Retracted that statement since.
Yeah, but I will say Andrew's asked you a question, cause we're in there, like, and Aaron said, the chair of the school committee said, it's not about the notices. She said that. So, this is a good, I don't know what, why they moved the kids now, cause they said it's not about the notices, and then they said it was a culmination of things, it was the water, it was the bills, cause we weren't paying the bills because of the agreement. Which, we changed that, but I can't imagine you'd move kids over bills, which Dan Keefe said this is a discussion between the water operator and the town of Millville, this has nothing to do with us. But that was listed as a reason to move the kids, so Andrew, I don't know why they moved the children.
And the and the operator termination.
Yeah, that was one thing, but to have, say like, oh, we should have someone found in a day, cause he resigned at four
That's correct.
Four o'clock PM on the twenty sixth, and then the twenty seventh was the meeting, so to be like, do you have a water operator in place? No, I don't have a new water operator in twenty six hours.
And and well, the other point I wanna stress on this is the fact that, where are they citing that they could do that?
Now, it's the whole argument that you put forth in the legal letter that Brian Riley sent.
But that's, but that's what I'm saying, so in essence, they moved them without any standing of any sort that we or they know of. Why are we, A, why ha- we haven't had any guarantees that they even need till March to make that decision? Or that they even have to do, use the agreement to change where the kids are located?
Right, so I they don't believe they need to follow this agreement to move the kids back, okay, because they used the temporary move. And that was in their motion, I think, that they voted on.
Yes, it was, I rewatched it, it was a temporary.
But it, so the real push fr- from, at least where I see it, on the extension is for budget opportunities. And because they really gotta, they gotta bite the bullet at some point, and they're way over capacity in facilities. They gotta get rid of something, and the something they're maybe thinking of is the complex. And if they can do that for this fiscal year, we benefit on a cost basis for them doing that. Versus carrying that building and other, you know, carrying more space than they need, and frankly, personnel. Administrative and otherwise. Cause that's the real cost.
So I guess the only, the, one of the main issues I have, but this is the fact that if we do do it, they they don't justif- their their own justification, they don't need to have a an extension, they didn't ask for an inste- extension.
They did mention it in the meeting, Dr. DeFalco did say, like, we're, you know, we're supposed to have a public hearing by the time we move the kids back and we're obviously not gonna do that, cause it's December thirteenth when we're at that meeting.
Yeah, but then they said that, uh uh am I wrong to assume that they're also saying that they can just move him later?
I didn't hear them say that, I only heard them say that they don't have time to get the public hearing in before January first to move the kids back, that's what Dr. DeFalco said in the meeting. So, so I don't know if he feels that way, I feel that the, like, I don't know that we necessarily need to do this either. I was just doing this similar to the bottled water, to be like, oh, we can't do that because of this, actually, we voted on this, we already decided. Well, we're worried about the water, we're gonna give you bottled water for thirty days. I'm trying to anticipate all the arguments that they'll say, I can't put the kids back because of this, this and this, and I'll be like yes, you can, because I've taken care of all of those three things.
Maybe I'm not clear. They don't think they need to follow this pro- uh, he, he might have said what he said, but the, it, my I think pretty appropriate interpretation is, he doesn't think he needs to follow this to move the kids back to MES. The extension allows for the opportunity for them to consolidate classes into three buildings instead of four. Which they do, they cannot do for this upcoming school year. They've missed the boat on doing it because of this agreement.
So they have to go back, so you're saying the temporary move means they have to go back to their original configuration, which was in the twenty two, twenty three school year, using all four buildings. If they want to remove a building, they need to have the public hearing, got it, okay, now I'm clear.
But they, in meetings, they've said they don't, they have no intention of changing the configuration of the schools until they get the plan.
That's what he said to me the other.
Well, that's what they've been saying in public, and that was the whole point of why they needed to get that uh through the fall meeting, the feasibility study.
Well, uh uh I can't, I can't tell you what they ultimately will do or decide to do, and they have a larger group of uh, you know, committee members to make decisions. But if you were, if if you went for, you're proactively go forward with an extension as something you support that might enable them to to look closer at consolidating buildings and eliminate one for this upcoming fiscal year, otherwise, you gotta wait another year. And we're, then we're, we're dealing with too much capacity, too much cost than we really need. Because they, they should have addressed that frankly, last fall, prior to the end of the year.
Several years ago.
That's right, correct.
Similar to the water situation. That no one addressed.
So I, I don't know, it's just a, a, it 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 provides an opportunity to do some consolidation, should they choose to do that. Now, I mean, Blackstone may have a different position, you know, and not support an extension.
Do we have any read on them, even a slight one?
So you could be the lead dogs on this possibility.
Trailblazers.
I'm I'm good with the extension, as long as if, let's say, we extend it to March first or March fifteenth or whatever, and then at, they don't take a vote on it within that timeframe, and then sometime shortly after, like in April or May, they take a vote and make a similar vote to they did in July, I think at that point, you should be a little bit more aggressive and pursuing our options, because at that point, it's not only breaching our regional agreement, it's also breaching our it's also going against the good faith of us kind of, you know, extending all branch out to them, so. I'm good with it, so long as we're ex- aggressive if this doesn't work out.
So, so if this doesn't move forward, you would want to look at the options we put forth in the letter on August fourteenth?
I'd echo those, um, the other thing, quick thing, would this be permanently changing it to, so that would be in the future?
I don't think anything's permanent, right? They they, because in the agreement, they can do this every year.
Yeah. So that'll be a one off.
This will be a one year extension for this.
Okay, that's, that was the thing, cause I was like, I don't wanna have that.
No, 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 this does not amend the regional agreement, this is a one time. Yeah.
Okay.
Cause any, I think a real change to the regional agreement requires a town. But this is just a Yeah, okay. So looking for a motion? Where I can make a motion? I will make a motion to extend the, let's see, how do we do this, must take, okay. I'll make a motion to extend the date that grade configurations can be established by the school committee and school district from January first twenty twenty four to March fifteenth twenty twenty four, and this will be only for this school year. And in future years, we will revert back to the regional agreement as stated. Looking for a second. I'm gonna pick Matthew because he was, hasn't, hasn't said. Thank you, Matthew, any further discussion?
Uh, one thing, should we say instead of like this school year, the reference the exact year?
Well, I put uh twenty twenty four on the both things, except for this school year only, and we're back to the regional agreement. Okay. Alright, so I think we're good, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye, Matthew?
Aye.
Perfect, okay. Alright, and still on the regional agreement, just because this has been brought up in meetings and it's been making me a little crazy, to be honest. Um, because they, it keeps saying that we're not following the regional agreement on operating costs. So just to be clear, so people know what operating costs. If you look in the regional agreement, section four D, again, D must be R, section. It says capital costs for town owned buildings, facilities and grounds that are are the responsibility of the member town from which they are leased, shall include building modifications to the structure and systems that exceed twenty five thousand per occurrence and will be paid directly by the town, are fully assessed to that member town. So, and then, that indicates, is this operating costs?
Those are cap, that's the definition of capital cost.
And operating costs are on
Six A one.
Okay, it says operating costs shall include all costs except capital, debt and transportation costs, but shall include interest on temporary notes issued by the district anticipation of revenue. So basically, operating costs are under twenty five per occurrence and capital costs are over twenty five per occurrence. Capital costs are our responsibility, operating costs are the responsibility of the district. So, because, I guess I'm a softie, and I feel bad for kids being like, please ma'am, may I have one glass of water? I think that we should be providing water to the school building. So we're in violation of the agreement based on these definitions, and Peter, I don't know if you wanna do that right, is there anything else you would clarify?
No, that's cor- that's correct, we've been, we have not been following the regional agreement in the way we've been paying the MES water bills. The the district would dispute our reading of the regional agreement, but you've seen council's review of that in the past and all of that, so we're not inconsistent. Morally is is a separate issue than what the agreement says.
Yes.
Okay, and the agreements were carefully crafted by a, you know, regional agreement uh committee back in the day, eighteen nineteen or nineteen or twenty, right?
Not that old.
Yeah.
We we revert, yeah.
It was nineteen and twenty, and it was voted on twenty, so that, in December of twenty. And it was a special town meeting that the voters approved, so, and the selectmen sign on behalf of, Millville Selectmen signed on behalf of the town. District uh chair signed, then chair signed on behalf of the district. And the Blackstone Chair signed on behalf of Blackstone School, uh, uh, Selectmen, so.
And then the other thing that I keep hearing about MES water is that Blackstone never provides a bill to the school district for water. But Peter, you don't know if that's entirely accurate.
Correct, because the the then, back in the day when this matter was discussed uh Dan Keys, the then town administrator, told me that uh the, that they, the district paid for the water at the complex. We've since been told by uh school leadership that that town pays it, the district does not. We we haven't pushed to verify either way, but I've heard two different versions of who pays that water.
So I think we want verification on that, cause I think that's part of the story that we keep hearing like well, you know, I know this is what it says in the agreement, but we don't give a bill to, you know, we don't, the town of Blackstone doesn't give a bill to the MEA, to the school district for the complex water. So, Peter, is that something that you could reach out and?
Yeah.
Okay, do you want us to take a vote on that?
Uh, you can direct me to do that, so maybe by vote, that would be good, how about that?
I would like to take, I would like to take a vote that we direct Peter Crusoe Town Administrator of the town of Millville to reach out to the town of Blackstone to get clarification around water expenses potentially incurred by the school district from the town of Blackstone for providing water at the complex in Blackstone, looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew, any further discussion? Seeing no, no, call for the vote, Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye, Matthew?
Aye.
Alright.
Good.
Alright. Um, so departments, building inspection fees, we're gonna
So we're gonna table that till next week, that's right, so next meeting, rather, but it is to have a separate set of higher fees for the electrical inspector and the plumbing inspector. Should they go outside of uh our uh regular scheduled hours.
Building, right?
Electrical, building and plumbing.
Not building, just electrical and uh plumbing right now, so Joe was putting something together on that.
They don't have office hours?
They have a set hours.
Okay.
So, so.
Go onto something on a Saturday or like something like that, like a weekend.
It's infrequent, but it has has happened.
Most towns would just have them structure their office hours so that they would, they have part time.
So that's how we are, that's how we are, we have specific hours for the electrical inspector, and we have specific hours that inspections are able to be made
Right.
by the plumbing inspector, and so there have been occasional requests for inspections because the residents aren't available during those particular hours. So that the inspector goes out on a Saturday or a Friday morning, or something like that. And so consistent with other communities, there's a higher fee rate, and the fee rate is split between the town and the inspector, so. And that, so that's been, you you'll see a memo from our building inspector with recommendations for that, and you all are the approvers of fees.
That's really nice, cause in other towns, uh, you you just don't get your inspection if you're not available.
Yeah, there are, but I've been told of other towns where they do.
It's kinda mean.
It's true, though.
But wouldn't, no, sorry, uh, wouldn't that require a change to the bylaw? Cause in the bylaw, we have this, the fee set there for building and electrical and plumbing, so wouldn't that require a change to the bylaws?
Uh, uh, I, I'll check the legal ramifications, okay? Yep. Good.
Well, you have plenty of time to get it on for the annual town meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Announcement, senior center calendar?
Yeah, that's just in your packet, there, you know, they they posted up on uh the couple of Facebook pages, but I think the upcoming things that are most interesting, Thursday, there's painting with Darryl, and they have lunch for three bucks, so that's something folks should look into. They've got a monthly uh COA meeting on the eighteenth. Um, they have Elf on the twenty fifth with lunch and a three dollar donation, it's a movie day. They have a field trip to B V T on January thirtieth coming up, so, and they got a variety of other activities that recur every week listed on their calendar, so I just pointed that out.
Public forum? Correspondence?
Correspondence, just in your packets, uh, just a letter from uh the Lieutenant Governor with a, we spent uh three, three times, three times a charm, uh, we applied for this assessor uh computer assisted mass appraisal system grant, we're getting twenty eight thousand dollars from the state for that under a community compact cabinet uh information technology grant program. Sarah, you know, put in, over three years, we've tried, three times working with Dave Manzello, and we finally got it. So that's good, because the system they currently use is uh becoming obsolete quickly. So that's just to let you know about that, it's good news.
Um, minutes?
So we'll have something, I have something that came in today, we'll have probably two sets of minutes coming up for your next meeting.
Alright, selector reports, Richard?
Nothing exciting. Except uh Snowmageddon, we made it through. Do we, we wanna talk about sidewalks and private decorum, or do we not?
Go ahead.
My understanding is that residents are responsible for shoveling sidewalks in front of their home. So, some of that has not been getting done. Is that my, is that correct, Peter? My understanding?
That is my understanding, I'm not a hundred percent expert on it, but that's my understanding, although the town has historically, they'll catch up and
At some point.
Plow that, but you know, they really, we have a, you know, a small team on the highway team, as it is. And then we have separately contracted plow folks and other service providers. And so I think you could, most people would say that Millville has pretty clear streets in storms, and does a good job, you know. They do a good job of it, so. You know, I saw some concerns, and I think the concern on Facebook was more about the D C R parking lot paving, which is not
Not our responsibility.
Anyway, that's correct. That's correct.
Anything else, Richard?
Oh, it's everything exciting.
Andrew?
Uh, yep, I got a couple things. So the, I believe it was the last meeting, we got appointment and elective postings. Uh, there are just a couple typos in the emergency departments, so we have some employees who are no longer employees, we'll say.
Ego I, Andrew.
Yeah, um.
Best editor.
Not, probably not, but um, but yeah, so we probably should remove those just to, because.
Okay, yeah, that's a. If you wanna give those to me, I'll.
Yeah.
Make sure we get it.
I put X's towards thing, well, I did other notes too, so I'll, I'll tell you after the meeting. Something legal thing.
Yep.
Anyway, um, the other thing is, is that this past Saturday, I met with the Library Board of Trustees and the librarian, which was a very productive meeting. It was kind of in conjunction with two things, which was one, the override discussion, the possibility of that. They didn't, as kind of was mentioned earlier, they don't really want anything. They wanna stay where they basically are. Uh, in any event, the other thing was in regards to a possible merger of different departments or buildings. Um, so at this point, we, I was kind of looking at the town hall as we're kind of looking at it and I know there was and is a lot of space at the building. Um, and I was looking at the feasibility of having the library possibly in the town hall. Because we do have some extra large rooms up there that I don't believe ever were used really, or if they were, it was very limited. Um, so that could possibly be effective to have a more conducive and kind of centralized location. Yeah, so that was that. They seemed, um, that, you know, they're, they're moving forward, they're not on favor, I won't put, say that. Um, but they are planning on meeting at, doing a tour with the chief, I believe, uh, to kind of tour the building, to kind of look at it. Um, I hopefully will be able to attend that, so kind of keep that posted, but that was that, so. Could be a possibly a good thing, so.
They're open to the possibility.
Yes, they were open to the possibility.
Perfect.
They didn't throw me out of the library.
There you go. Um, okay, well, I guess two things, it's actually on our agenda and I probably should mention this before I, or gotten clarity on these two things. So first, is, and I'm gonna attend the school committee meeting on Thursday? Is anyone, I know Peter will post a meeting, but I was wondering if anyone knows right now if they'll attend or not? You know?
I won't be attending, no.
Well, no, will not be attending, okay. It's six o'clock.
I'll probably be attending. I might be a little late, just because of the time-wise travel.
Yeah, yeah. Matthew?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay, that's okay. Um, and other thing related to MES water, and this was in, um, the, an email for Mary Jude. And maybe we should may have this an agenda item for our next meeting is. I'm kind of surprised she said this, because she says, it doesn't seem like we have a plan. But I believe we have a three-step plan. We talk about fixing the water. With what we have now, with the cor- op- proper operating of the chlorine system. And then the longer-term solution would be tapping into experts. So I thought if we did maybe a one-page memo. That we could give to her and be like, here's our plan and perhaps have Dr. Gullik look at it and. So maybe just to formalize it and then we vote on it and then we can send it to her at the next meeting, so it's more precise, so. For whatever reason, she thinks, she mentioned, I don't know that you have a plan. I was like, we do have a plan, we've been talking about it with you for a while.
Corrective action plan is in there, they have it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, didn't that, that wasn't the.
Yeah, it's in the corrective action plan, right? Okay.
Yeah, so they have an officially submitted corrective action plan, which was amended recently by Dr. Gullik, the operator. Who has the authority to submit such a thing.
Of course.
And in it, uh, he described that it's basically continuing the system as we have it. In that corrective action plan had the longer-term plays identified of what was previously submitted. So I don't know that you'd wanna do.
Something separate?
Something separate and different, right? And if you look at. What folks saw of the correspondence from her and the answers to the issues she had concerns about. Uh, 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 she's not always fully informed, because she's at a very high level.
Of course. She has a lot of direct reports.
Yep.
Okay, all right, so maybe I'm gonna try to set up a meeting with Peter and myself, and if one more person wants to join, we can have one more person join. Um, but I'm gonna try to set up a meeting with her either this week or next week. I prefer this week to try to get a little bit more information from her before we go to the school committee meeting on Thursday, but if not. Yeah, well, you know, we're, we all have complicated schedules, so, okay. All right. That's all I had. Matthew, anything? Town administrator report?
No, I don't really have anything, although I'll just say that we, you know, since you last met, or the night you last met. Was during that very difficult storm where there was a lot of power loss because of trees coming down and wrapping up wires. And I think that the national grid folks were in very good communication with the town. The town folks, your, your, your police, your fire EMS.
Yeah.
And your highway, including your, your, um, your, uh, tree warden. All did yeoman's work during that storm to get the power up and running as, as quickly as possible. If you saw that, I don't know if you saw that. Tree wrapped up in the wires on Ironstone Street.
It was crazy.
How did they even get at that?
Yeah, yeah.
That was incredible. So I, I just, you know, recognize the efforts that those guys, they all did, all, folks all did. And I know the residents suffered some hardships, but you know, it's funny how the hardships, you, you really do appreciate. Running war, heat.
Yeah.
All that sort of thing.
Shower and hot soup.
And you're, you, you can forget quickly how bad it was when you didn't have it, it seems, so. You know, folks got through it, um, pretty well, thanks to a lot of effort by a lot of folks. Um, and likewise during storms like we just had, which wasn't such a bad storm. Um, you know, I think that, you know, all those crews are always there doing that stuff. And they're probably gonna be called upon again this Tuesday, tomorrow night into Wednesday. Because we're in for some, a lot of rain and a lot of wind. So I'm hoping it's not a repeat of what happened in mid-December.
Yeah.
Um, the only other thing is that. The, the tree warden, you know, had to use money, so we will. I don't know when or how exactly, but we expect that there likely will be reimbursement from the state. For incremental costs during that storm.
Great.
And there were incremental costs during that storm by the town. From the tree warden to have trees cleared that had come down and so forth. Uh, for which we don't have budget, but we've paid and we've been creative on moving around in the budget for the time being. Until reimbursement. But the tree warden's budget is totally exhausted right now. So we might get to a situation where we might have to take something out of some of the ARPA monies we've set aside.
Okay.
And put back into tree warden. Remember, you did thirty grand some time ago. For tree warden to be proactive, this would be more reactive given storms, because there's nothing left. To cover any tree removal and so forth in the budget for the rest of the year.
Okay.
So just highlight that. I have nothing.
Yeah, five and a half more months to go.
That's right.
Okay. All right, items not recently anticipated, forty hours prior to meeting?
Nothing.
Okay, our next regular meeting will be two weeks from today, Monday, January twenty-second, right here at seven PM. Be there or be square. Uh, I will make a motion to adjourn our meeting at nine nineteen PM.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye, Matthew?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. Pardon, thank you for staying.